A, approve agenda as submitted. Item B, receive and place on file all notices pertaining to this meeting. Item C, receive and place on file all materials having any bearing on this meeting. Item D, approval of minutes of the regular meeting on November 20, 2023, as on file in the city clerk's office. Item E, approval of the treasurer's report of claims in the amount of $787,659.44. Item F, approval of Boswell's report of claims in the amount of $1,647.18. Item G, approval of pay request number 15 in the amount of $53,442.45 to Three FI Incorporated for the June 2022 hailstorm as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item H, approval of the pay request number 16 to Three FI Incorporated in the amount of $225,704.34 for the June 2022 hailstorm. Item I, approval of change order number one, decrease in the amount of $10,512.92, and final pay request number one in the amount of $242,697.37 to Dax Construction Incorporated for the curb and sidewalk improvement, Court Street from 10th to 13th Street, 2023 project as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item J, award of the bid for the armor coating, various locations, 2024, Project Top Coat Incorporated in the amount of $52,673.79 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item K, award of bid for the asphalt ceiling at various locations, 2024 project to Hall Brothers LLC in the amount of $95,443.47 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item L, resolution number 7183, executing amendment number one to the agreement dated August 7, 2023 between the city and Olson Incorporated to retain Olson for additional services related to the repair and rehabilitation of lift station number six as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item M, resolution number 7184, executing the agreement renewal to maintenance agreement number four with the Nebraska Department of Transportation for the period of January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2024 as recommended by the Board of Public Works. Item N, resolution number 7185, executing the year-end certification of city street superintendent form. And item O, resolution number 7186, appointing Jason Moore as a city's certified street superintendent. Anybody want anything pulled off? C9, Mr. McLean.
I move the items listed under the consent agenda be approved, accepted, and/or ratified as presented.
Second. Your vote, please. That passes eight zero. There are no public hearings or tonight. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution number 7187, adopting a code of conduct applicable to all city council, board, commission, and committee members of the City of Beatrice, establishing standards of conduct for such members in the application and administration of their duties and powers.
I move that resolution number 7187 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Yes, so the code of conduct that we have prepared, I think you guys had a chance to look at in your packet, kind of just lays out some of the general rules and guidelines for not only the city council members, but our other boards and commissions and committees that we have and how they are to govern themselves moving forward. It's got things in there such as, you know, doing work for the common good of the people, right, and your personal interest. It talks about they'll refrain from abusive conduct or inappropriate language, no profanity, that type of stuff. Keep confidential information confidential. Be cautious not to make representations or promises of the council for future councils or committee members or board members that they can't uphold. It talks about those types of things. In general, a lot of them are pretty common sense, I would argue, you know, just how people should conduct themselves. But this way, we'll have, hopefully with your approval tonight, we'll have an actual code of conduct that's approved, and then look to have the various board members and council members and committee members sign off just saying they realize that they should govern themselves accordingly moving forward.
And, you know, this, you know, actually, the city clerk, Erin, I want to thank her because she came to me and Tobias for this idea. And, you know, I think it's all what we want to do because we've always ran that we want to try to represent the best of the city the best we can. So it just kind of puts on record that we want to do the right thing. Discussion. From the public.
Your vote on this tonight, if you vote yes, you're essentially agreeing to it, correct? You don't have to, we're not actually signing something, correct?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes. All right. Your vote, please. And that passes eight zero. Item B, resolution number 87188, executing the sponsorship agreement with Baumgart's Family Foundation for Hannibal Park.
I move the resolution number 7188 be passed and adopted.
Second.
Again, another resolution, another agreement out for Hannibal Park powered by Pinnacle Bank. This one's for the pavilion that's out by, or the pavilion that's out by Field 7. For those who are familiar with Hannibal Park, it's where the new playground set was put there four or five years ago. But the pavilion out there, Baumgart's has taken the naming rights to that pavilion at $7,000 per year for five years.
Discussion. All right. Gentlemen, your vote, please. That passes eight zero.
Can we start selling streets and whatever?
Which one are you bidding on?
I can't do that. I just did the code of ethics.
Oh, sorry, that's right.
He did have his eye on Doyle Lane.
Yep.
All right. C, resolution number 7189, entering into the agreement between the city and Main Street Beatrice Incorporated to provide funding to Main Street Beatrice Incorporated.
I move that resolution number 7189 be passed and adopted.
Second.
So we have before you tonight a funding agreement with Main Street. We've had a funding agreement with Main Street for a number of years, kind of one-year agreements. This one is for the next, for the current fiscal year that we're in, so it run October 1st of 2023 through September 30th of 2024. It's very similar to last year's agreement. Notable changes are this year is an increase of $10,000. So instead of a $30,000 funding request, it's a $40,000 funding request. Most of that increase has to do with an entrepreneurial grant that Main Street was awarded, and then also some increase in some marketing funds. Those are kind of the two big reasons for the increase here. Outside of that, I would turn it over to Morgan Fox if she has anything she'd like to say or that you guys may have questions about.
Hi, everybody. So as Tobias said, most of the request is very similar to last year, keeping up with our BRE visits, our marketing visits, our courses for business owners. And I wanted to discuss a little bit about our E3 grant from Main Street America. That's the Equitable Economic Ecosystem Grant. It's a pilot program that's being run in only a few states right now, and Nebraska is one, and Beatrice is one of three communities that was chosen for this program. It is designed to help us identify barriers and gaps in entrepreneurship and develop strategies to overcome those and new tools, and use new tools put out by Main Street America to help foster a healthy economic ecosystem from new and aspiring business owners as well as current and retiring entrepreneurs. So this does include five virtual workshops and meetings, and those have homework for us to get out in the community, hold focus groups, meet with different shareholders in our community to move this forward. It also includes a survey that will go out to all of our small business owners so that we better understand the needs of our current entrepreneurs that will help shape our virtual meetings and courses. Sorry, I have a terrible frog in my throat today. It will also include an eight to 10-hour site visit from Main Street America staff and Forward City staff in our community to hold some of those focus groups. So we're asking for a little funding to cover some staff time and to hold those courses. There's $5,000 seed grant from this program that will help create a program that we can really do anything with. We can do a Shark Tank-style thing where we let entrepreneurs, locals pitch business ideas, and we pick who's the best, and we give them startup money. Or we can create a loan fund, or really, we can be pretty flexible with it. I'm asking for $5,000 to put towards matching. That will then give us $15,000 for that seed grant instead of the 5,000. I would also like to talk about our marketing strategy. I heard there were some questions about the Beatrice logo and our new marketing. So it's not a logo, it is a wordmark. So we're not trying to rebrand Main Street or the city or anything. This is just another way to market our downtown and our community. The goal is to work alongside city initiatives as well as stake your claim. We adjusted our font choice and some of the colors within this marketing strategy. The whole plan, the point of all of this is to bring attention and bring attention to our downtown district and encourage locals to stay and spend their money here, which I think we all can agree is very important. So since it's a wordmark and not a new logo, we will be using it on things like t-shirts and mugs. We want to put window clings in all of our businesses downtown. We have radio ads that we're working on, newspaper ads. We have a great new video that launched, we're very excited about it. We have worked part of the time with the Chamber to grow this, and I know they're talking about using it to attract tourism from outside of the Beatrice area as well. So I guess I'm going to take a drink of water, and you guys feel free to ask questions.
That $5,000 grant?
Yes.
Was the city administration or this body notified that that grant, that you guys had put into that grant before you put in for it?
No.
Did, were we notified after the fact of that grant that you had received?
No, the press release hasn't come out yet.
So we weren't, the matching funds were never okayed prior to this meeting?
I put in a request for it.
For this meeting?
Yes.
That's not the way we do things, is it? I thought we okayed matching funds before their grants came in. That's the way it's always been.
We have not been awarded the grant yet.
I'm sorry?
We have not been awarded the money.
But you should have told us about the grant that you were putting into so it could be brought to this body to say, yes, we will match that or we will not before you have put the grant in.
I understand that. Thank you for your information. I did receive word about the matching funds after it's come about because this program is still evolving. So we learned about it after we were given the initial approval for the grant.
So we put in for a grant and didn't know if we had to have matching funds or anything?
The matching, the matching funds part of the grant was not part of it during our initial application.
So you want an extra $10,000. $5,000, you said, is for the matching on the, on the grant?
Correct.
All right. The other $5,000, you say you want to use for that, uh, let me see here, equitable economic ecosystem pilot grant?
No, that is, the matching is...
That is the $5,000?
Yes.
And the other $5,000 you want to use for what?
Part of it will be marketing, and part of it is to go towards helping cover staff costs working with the Kensington.
Now, according to the contract, that should all be covered in the $30,000 that we give you every year. The marketing, the reimbursement, 100 direct for unique and direct visits with current property owners, up to 2,000, and 25, or excuse me, 1250 per quarter meeting with the city and community leaders up to 5,000. $100 per business retention and expiration, expansion, excuse me, interviews with businesses, owners up to 3,000. $5,000 for time and effort to work with prospective business owners and maintain online resources for entrepreneurs and report businesses to the actions to the council. Hold five workshops a year at $500 per workshop to up to 2,500. $5,000 matching funds for the economic, that's out of the, the extra 10 you're asking for. 100 per district and unique marketing assessments up to 2,000. 600 per marketing workshop to $1,200. And 13,000 for marketing campaign. That's how it's broke down in this contract.
Mm-hmm.
And so... The 30,000 has covered all this in the past.
I did increase the marketing budget this year from 10 to $13,000 in my request.
You've increased it 3,000?
Yes, sir.
So you've still got 2,000 that you're just out there for whatever?
That is part of working for the Kensington, our working for grants and things with Hoppy Development.
I thought we took care of that Kensington stuff with them here a few weeks ago.
The grant she's talking about is the new rural workforce housing grant that we're, they have to apply through a 501(c)(3), and so that's why we're using Main Street as the conduit to apply for the grant. Hoppy is helping on the grant application, the city Beatrice is helping on the grant application, and matching funds will come from the city in the event that we are successful on that grant application.
Yes.
Okay, so we still haven't spent the $2,000 yet, correct? Or they haven't?
Again, the funding agreement before you is for the current fiscal year, and so yes, they have not requested reimbursement for anything, so they have no agreement for this fiscal year.
Okay, if, if, if the grant goes through for the $5,000 or the, the matching funds, that would be 30, 35,000. And, you know, everybody's going, well, that's, that's not too much money, which it's not in the scope of everything else that we spend. But then again, that's not all that we give you guys. We give you free rent, and... From what I was told by some people, it's about $8 a square foot, and there's about 1,600 square foot in that building down there. That's, that's $1,080 a month that we're giving them, plus we pay for their utilities. We pay for everything down there except their internet. Now, I tell you, there's a lot of business...
And our phone.
Huh?
And our phone.
And the phone, well, okay, phone and internet. There's a lot of businesses here in town that would just love to have that kind of, 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 deal.
Do all those businesses you're referring to do the stuff that Main Street Beatrice does to bring a business to...
I don't know what Main Street Beatrice does. I haven't seen much lately.
We should probably pay attention when Michael's come up here and given all the demonstrations and the quarterly reports.
And I will tell you, Michael lied to me here the last time he did a deal, and that's it. Yes, Ted, he did. He told me flat that he went and talked to all those people on those roundabouts. I had five people in the audience that said he did not.
We haven't had five people in the audience most of the time.
I'm Rich. I'm Dana Hyde, 208 Sherman Street. I'm treasurer of Main Street Beatrice. I was actually one of the founders way back in the late 90s. That tells a little bit of my age.
24 years ago. I looked it up.
Thank you, 24 years ago. So I have been one of two treasurers that Main Street has had, so there's been some good continuity through that. And I have to say, your last question about Michael lying to you, I honestly don't believe that. He has spent, he spent quite a few months on that issue and talked to people at different times throughout that time. And I think what people said was he hadn't talked to him maybe in the last month.
No.
But that he had conversations with people throughout the downtown, throughout probably, I would say, two years, the last two years, give or take. Did he talk to everybody, a part of every business? Maybe not. He might have talked to a spouse and not them directly if there's more than one person in the business. That happens. I think we can, anybody who has a spouse knows that. Sometimes somebody gets talked to and somebody else doesn't. So I, you know, Michael had 10 years at Main Street, and I think he did an outstanding job for us. And, and one of the things I think is he was, he always tried to be truthful and honest in what he did. Now, budget-wise, on the new contract, the, the matching funds aren't, we don't have to have the matching funds. What Morgan is saying is we got a $5,000 grant. If we find another 5,000 in matching funds, then it frees up 5,000 from them. So we didn't have to have matching funds to get this grant, but in effect, we can end up with 15,000 rather than 5,000.
Thank you, Dana.
And so that is why we're going in this direction, because it is just smart to do it that way. We put it as part of our city contract because it fits very well with what we do under the city contract when it comes to entrepreneurship. So we can take the money then that we raise, which is about 80% of our budget, we go out and raise, the city provides about 20% of our budget to help us out, which is great. I feel like we give a lot back also. You guys give a lot to us, we give a lot back, and I think it's a good relationship. So we take the money then that we raise and help us, just like the city challenges that you're having with employees, we're having the same thing with trying to keep up with the expectations of what's out there and what people are getting paid. So to be honest with you, a lot of that, 10,000, is us kind of shifting our budget and asking you as the city of Beatrice to help cover more of, say, the marketing and meeting with businesses and things like that. And then the money we take in, we can then funnel towards our employees. And so that, that's really, it's a shift a bit of, of how we lay out our budget.
My point was, though, a lot of things the last three or four years has been done by Main Street without our, our knowledge. It's got very lackadaisical, just like this grant. That should have gone to us or to the administration that they could have, and then we could have given you the go-ahead on that.
Okay.
Yes, that's the way it works.
Hey, Rich, Rich, let, let's get some other people's opinions.
Well, I'm not quite finished.
Well, I'll come back to you, but we need to let everybody else have a chance to. So we'll come back. Anybody else?
I want to speak, anybody, Terry? You in yet?
No, wait. Couple of questions. The video launch, so where will that be launched? I mean, where, where?
You can currently see it on our Facebook page is where it lives right now. It's mainly just the logo, a few great pictures of our downtown and our events. Just saying, we're excited to talk to you about the way this is going.
So there'll be a link to that, to the city's page, the county, the county page, the Engage page, the Chamber of Commerce page, those kind of things?
That is in the future, yes, when we partner with the Chamber in tourism.
Okay.
That is the plan. Right now, we're focusing on downtown.
Okay, yeah, I get that. So I, that, that was my one question. So, and my statement here is, I really appreciate the work you guys do. Main Street's the only organization, and I've said this before, but this, Main Street's the only organization that's helping the city complete their comprehensive plan, which is woefully outdated, but you are the, if you've, if you've read the city comprehensive plan, your organization is the only private organization out there that, that is helping us complete those steps within the comprehensive plan. So, but the other thing is, and Dana, you can help me because I'm sure I'm going to get these numbers a little bit wrong, but the monies that we give you, you have subsequently, we've run about, we're in the process, we've either run, or we're in the process of running, what, a million three through you guys in grants? I mean, if you count what we're doing, so...
The one grant is not with us right now.
No, but it's coming, it, we're in the process...
Right, that'll be solved, yes, yes.
Right. So, but we're going to run about a million three or a million four through you guys that'll go back into the city.
Correct.
So our investment of $40,000 here is going to net the city about $1,400,000. Not a bad investment.
On top of everything else that we do.
On, I was just talking dollars and cents.
Yep.
But then if you, if you look at what has occurred downtown, that's mostly because of the work you've done. My wife and I went to the downtown parade, and even I'm always surprised about how many buildings have been fitted, and it's just impressive. So, but yeah, congratulations on the work you're doing, thank you. So Bob, that's all I got.
Yeah, Bob, as an example, we fund Engage for a lot of money every year. We do not micromanage what they do. They give us, Terry gives us reports, and, and a nice lady that's running the place gives us reports, and we shouldn't micromanage these people either with the amount of money that we pay them. I trust that they're doing the right things with it, but micromanaging organizations that aren't under the city's umbrella, I guess, just because we fund them, I just don't believe in the micromanagement, and I don't think it gets us anywhere.
Rich, back to you.
I'm just going to make a statement, and I'm going to vote no against this because I don't, I don't think it needs to be done.
And one thing that I will clarify, too, the $40,000 a cap, and that $40,000 may or may not be reached based on the reimbursement that happens during the year. It may be, it may not be, but one of the things that has to be submitted on a quarterly basis is bills, just like Engage, and we will reimburse them based on allowable expenses. So I just wanted to clarify that as well.
Right, we, this is the second year we've set it up this way, where you visit a business and you do that BRE, and this is what that is, that's how much money you get from that. That works extremely well, I think, for both sides because of, then if we fall short, if we don't visit the number of businesses we say, we will not then get that money. It's as simple as that. So we have to do our job in Main Street, and then we get reimbursed.
I just want to thank you for your partnership with the city. I think you've been a good ambassadors for the downtown, I really appreciate it, and I do think you did good work on a limited budget, so, just from my point of view.
First of all, thank you for everything you do. I think the other councilmen have already kind of said that, and I got to meet Michael and work with Michael quite a bit, first of all, through Leadership Beatrice and then through Main Street Beatrice. I'm just going to say this, I find it odd, we're arguing about $40,000 when we write off 120,000 a year on bad ambulance debts. I'm done.
Terry?
I know it does sound wrong, but the, I think in the last 18 months since I sat down there before I even became a councilman and asked you guys to, to set up a downtown committee, and you were willing to go along with my thoughts anyway at that time and do it, and then the mayor appointed this downtown committee since, I probably worked as close with Michael as anybody, if not closer than anybody here. And he's got a job, and Morgan has one now, that is a lot like Tobias's and Taylor's job, and it's a 24/7 job. It's just, it is not an eight-to-five type job. I was with that man multiple hours, weird hours in the morning and weird hours at night, and he worked very, very hard, and I've been very impressed with Morgan when she was assisting me and Michael, and since she's taken over, I've only been able to meet with her a couple of times because she's been swamped. And, but I want you to know how much I appreciate the work you do. I think the money is very well spent, I do. There's, I mean, we have a huge budget here, and $40,000, you guys make it go a long ways. And we, if we don't like what you're doing, or we don't like the expenditure, then those guys sit and you guys negotiate with them on deciding whether to reimburse that or not. I mean, how much fair can that be to the city? So I just want you to keep doing what you're doing. I need you on my downtown committee as long as the mayor has me on that committee, so I appreciate all your work on that. Keep doing what you're doing.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
When's this contract end?
One year. October 1st of 2023 through September 30 of 2024.
Okay.
The, the only thing I would say is really try hard to make that word art or whatever you have, work with Stake the Claim. Way too much money was spent with that and come up with that, and from an old marketing person, it scares me when we have people that maybe go a little bit rogue with a label. So, you know, please incorporate that the best you can, because I think we even had some council members that had, were on that and did a good job.
Yeah.
And so we have to keep that in mind.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any discussion from the public? All right, gentlemen, your vote, please. And that passes seven one. Thank you.
I promise you won't have to see me. This is it.
You're always welcome.
I'll come up again.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, very much.
Why not?
Okay, that ends the resolutions. We'll move on to ordinances. We have one tonight. We have ordinance amending section 2-267 of the Beatrice City Code regarding the powers and duties of the chief of police. Since it's an ordinance, the first thing we'll vote on is whether we're going to suspend the rules and take action by reading it three times tonight.
I move that said ordinance be given number 23-36. The title there be approved, the rules be suspended, and the said ordinance be read by number only three times tonight.
Second.
And a motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, so your vote, please. And that passes eight zero. Ordinance number 2336 by number only the first time, 2336 the second time, and 23-36 the third and final time.
I move that ordinance number 23-36 be passed and approved. I move that ordinance number 23-36 be passed and approved.
Second.
So many of our city codes are set up and read that the chief of police has certain powers to do a number of things, whether that's enforcing junk vehicles or nuisances or pulling people over. I mean, there's a number of things within our code. Currently, we don't have a chief of police, we have a police department director, and so what we're proposing is making a modification to our city code that basically says the police department director has the same powers and authority that the chief of police has. We did a similar thing when we did a billing inspector and changed over to a community development director. Again, where there's a number of codes in there that refer back to billing inspector, we put the same type of language in that particular code section.
So if we go back to a police chief, we don't have to redo it, it's just going to be in the...
It'd just be an extra language in there. Yep. If we feel like at that time we can take it out, otherwise it would just be something extra that sits in there and we'll all try to remember why, you know, 10, 20 years later.
We won't be here, so it won't make any difference.
Any other discussion? From the public? Seeing none, your vote, please. That is eight, passes eight zero. Move on to public forum. The purpose of the public forum is for the presentation of an item by the general public to the city council for consideration on a later date. No action, no discussion or action will be taken by the city council at this time. Anybody here for public forum? All right. There are no discussion reports tonight. The next regular city council meeting is December 18, 2023 at 7:00 PM, right here at the BPS Administration Building Room. Mr. McLean?
I have to move the meeting be adjourned at 7:31 PM.
Second.
Favor? Passes eight zero. Thank you and you guys have a good, safe night.